Excellent, thanks. So I will call the meeting to order. This is the, uh, this 11/20/20, meeting of the Town Plan and Zoning Commission for the Town of Fairfield. Thanks, everybody, for attending yet another virtual PDC meeting. Today, we have some cleanup on meeting minutes from the last meetings that we haven't adopted. And then one item on for public hearing. So we have one, three, four, five, five, um, meeting minutes. I was gonna call them all together, but I'm gonna call March 24 separately first because I have to abstain because that was the one meeting I have missed in the last year. So I can't vote on that. So I figure I'll just take that one first. So first item up on the agenda, the meeting minutes for March 24, 2020. They have a motion?
This is Tommy Noonan, move to approve.
Thank you. Motion to approve by Commissioner Noonan. Second by Commissioner Berman. Thank you. Uh, any, uh, any comments or corrections? Questions on the minutes for staff?
Not for me.
Anyone else? It is helpful when you literally raise your hand in the monitor. It's easiest for me to look for that.
Just for this matter, Mr. Chairman, since you're recused, both Commissioners Elliott and Gordon would be voting on this set of minutes. They were both present.
Thank you. So Commissioner Gordon is sitting for, thank you, I forgot to mention that. Commissioner Gordon, you're sitting for Commissioner Francis during this meeting. And Commissioner Elliott, he'll be sitting for me. And actually, since I am, well, I can call the meeting. I mean, I'll just, I'll just abstain from the vote. Not recusing myself. Anyone else have any questions or corrections? Okay, motion is to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any noes? And you have one abstention, Wagner. With that, the minutes for March 24th are adopted unanimously. Does anyone have an objection to me calling the minutes of April 28, May 26, June 23, and July 14, all in one item? Raise your hand. Okay, so the next thing I'll do is then call all the meeting minutes for April 28, May 26, June 23, and July 14, 2020. They have a motion? Thank you, Commissioner Berman. Second by Tommy Noonan. Commissioner Noonan, thank you. I reviewed the PDF, uh, the minutes for all of these dates, and I didn't see anything that needed a correction. Anybody else have any? Yes, Commissioner Vaughn. Yeah, I've done mute.
So on 333 Unco Road, I was trying to vote no, but because of technical something or other, it didn't get recorded as no.
Which, which date are we looking at?
Oh, um, uh, July 14th.
Okay.
Was that the last hearing we had?
Yes.
Yeah, because we had planning meeting last week. Okay, that's the one, yeah.
Well, that was for the, uh, the exterior modification to brick?
Correct, yeah.
So instead of unanimous, you were trying to cast a dissenting vote that we didn't get for technical issues?
Yes. Okay.
Okay, so.
So Commissioner Berman and Noonan, you accept that, um, modification? So to approve all of the minutes with the exception of July 14, which should be corrected to note, Commissioner Vaughn, dissenting vote on 333 Unco Road.
I, I amend my motion.
Thank you. Commissioner, okay, great. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We're ready to vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Please raise your hand. Okay, any abstentions? Okay, so those, as corrected, are approved unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is public hearing. As, um, uh, Ms. Harrigan, uh, mentioned before the meeting started, any members of the public who wish to be heard on this item, please note in the chat box your, um, name. And we will call, uh, each person in order as they sign into the chat box. Of course, public hearing portion, uh, public comment here, portion, portion of the hearing. Once the public is, with their comments, will return to the applicant for rebuttal. And when the applicant is submitted rebuttal, we will close the public hearing on, um, this item. So with that, uh, I'll call 28 Black Rock Turnpike for zoning compliance application of Alfonso Camerata for a 23-unit residential building pursuant to Section 830G of the Connecticut statutes in the residential C-zone. And I believe that's Attorney Rizzio. Yes? Hello, Attorney Rizzio. I think you need to go off mute.
We need to unmute, guys. Gary, can you hear me? Am I there?
I can hear now. I can hear you now.
Yes.
You have a little bit.
Is that better?
Yeah, camera, where'd you? There you are.
I'm here. Up in the upper left-hand corner there.
You can, you can, if you like.
I can what?
See the commissioners. You can do the grid, a grid view.
Oh, I have a grid. I could see it.
Excellent. All right, the floor is yours.
Chairman, members of commission, my name is Raymond Rizzio. I'm happy to be before you tonight. Tonight, representing Alfonso Camerata Jr. with regard to the property of 528 Black Rock Turnpike. Camerata is standing before you pursuant to Section 8-30J, a innocent application for certificate of zoning compliance, a site plan approval for a 23-unit, uh, um, affordable housing project pursuant to Section 8-30G. This property is in a, currently in a residency zone. As I said, the property is about 11,684 square feet. Mr. Camerata would like to build a, uh, building that is three stories of living space above a 23, uh, 26, uh, parking space, um, uh, parking lot. Or garage, open air, for the most part, open-air garage. This property, we believe, is uniquely situated in perfect, perfect, um, location for this type of development. Directly to the north is, uh, some condominiums called Fairwood Condominiums, which is basically a multitude of four-family homes. All up and down Black Rock Turnpike is multifamily. We are on the corner of Castle Avenue. Across the street, it, properties are located, are in a DCD zone. The property, there's two office buildings, there's the rear of a, uh, commercial, uh, auto, um, auto sales facility and repair facility. We believe this is a great location. It's also very close, within 1,200, 1,200 feet of the entrance and exits to 995. And a, depending on how, how, how far, how much I like to walk, uh, not that far of a distant walk, too, and certainly a walkable, um, to many, to many restaurants, to, uh, many businesses, and even to, uh, the train station, uh, the new Fairfield Metro train station. There are no wetlands or watercourses on the property. The project will be served by public water and sewer. Our client has recently did a project that this commission approved around the corner on King's Highway and the corner of Halliport. He's a really nice non-unit project. I think in, in doing so, he, when he, he likes this area, there's a tremendous amount of interest in renting those units. He, uh, he engaged Phil Saron as his architect to prepare, and you'll see in a little bit, and Phil will take you through it. He did a great rendering of the building, the way it's gonna appear. It fits very nicely into this corner lot. It respects the sightlines and visibilities. Um, it's attractive from all sides. And, and working with our traffic engineer, uh, we have, we have put together a traffic flow that we believe will not have any interference with some of the homes that are along Castle Avenue as that it'll be a full turn in, into the building, you know, meaning right or left. But it'll be a right turn out only. All traffic out of the building will be directed toward Black Rock Turnpike. There is sufficient queuing. Uh, there is a stop sign right there. And it will give the ability, basically, to continue to keep this in the more well-traveled areas and not have people, uh, leaving and traversing through the resident, more, but more, really, it's only one side of Castle Avenue is residential, the back is mostly, uh, a lot of the rear of commercial properties. You have the LAR Building on one end, and at the other end, you have the Town Fair Tire, uh, Shopping Center where Goodwill is located. We, we think, like I said, this is an excellent, excellent project. Mr. Camerata has put a lot of time and effort. He's worked with all the departments. Uh, Mike Galante will take you through a little bit of the traffic. Jim Casidis will give you a quick overview on our, um, on our engineering of the property, and then Phil Saron will take you through the design. I would like to, I'll read some of our, I'll bring it in later, the affordable part of the project, the 8-30G and how it applies. We would have to reserve 30% of our units must be affordable. These were, these are intended to be rentals, but we do reserve the right to sell them. The rentals on the one-bedroom unit, 15, four of them would be, we have a total of seven affordable units. Four of them will be, um, um, at 60%, which bring in, brings a rental rate of about $915. And then three of the units will be at the 80%, which will be a rental rate of $1,130. Clearly, excellent opportunity for, um, the workforce in Fairfield to live in this fine area, live in a great neighborhood, live in a neighborhood that's very transit-oriented with regard to getting close to a train station, close to 95, and close to commercial, commercial districts. I would think it would have a very high walkability score. So let me, let me take, that, that is basically an overview from a broad stroke. I'd like to have Phil Saron discuss the, uh, the architecture of the building. Then I will, will lead into our engineer. And then from there, we'll have Mike Galante, who most certainly want to hear about traffic and parking. And, uh, and then I will go back through the affordable portion of it. I just want to confirm so that I don't have to read our whole narrative, that our narrative is hereby incorporated into this public hearing. I think it's been posted as part of the application, but it'll prevent me from having reading, uh, two pages of why Fairfield is, we know is short on its affordability. We believe this will try, bring you closer in achieving the required 10% that the state is required. So with that, I'd like to lead, lead into Phil Saron. And Phil, if you can, uh, basically take the commission through your design, how you, how you came about this, and then also discussions that you may have had with, for example, the fire, the fire marshal, some of the other code, uh, code compliance issues that came up and how they were addressed.
Sure, I'm happy to. Good evening. It's Phil Saron, my office is here in Fairfield, Connecticut. Chris, you, you're gonna put the drawings up for me?
Chris is muted, but he will put your drawing, he can hear you and put your drawings up.
And I mean, in the meantime, I'll kind of get started, but, um, hopefully they'll come up soon. The grade level is basically mostly parking. Um, there you go. So on, on the ground level, it's mostly parking with storage room, the two staircases that exit out, an area for dumpsters, central generator, handicap parking, um, an elevator, and a little lobby. And, um, when we met with the fire marshal, one of his concerns was that the both stairs exited into the parking area. So we revised that so that the one stair, which is on the, um, the Black Rock Turnpike side, would have an exit that goes straight out to the sidewalk that's gonna be on the street. And when we get to the site plans, you'll see that we'll be providing new sidewalks there. We also created an area for mailboxes and bikes, um, in the parking area on the lower level. Um, and then the other issue that came up when we met with the fire marshal was to make sure we had vehicle, uh, emergency vehicle access under the building to get somebody out if they were in a stretcher, if they needed medical assistance. So we actually raised the height of the building enough so that an ambulance could drive underneath the building into the parking garage to have access to either of the two staircases or the elevator area. Chris, can you go to the next page, please? So, uh, that there's right. So on the next two levels, which you can see here, these are the second and third floors, which would be the first two residential levels. It's basically eight, one, one, one-bedroom units on each one of the two floors. And with a staircase, with obviously the two stairs, a central corridor, wandering mechanical spaces and some storage on each one of the two floors. Chris, can you go to the next sheet, please? The third floor, the third floor is similar on the bottom right-hand corner of the sheet, except for that we've converted one of the, one of the apartments into a two-bedroom there. So you can see the apartment that's closest to the mechanical and the storage room is a two-bedroom. The other, the other apartments on that floor are also one-bedrooms. And then on the top-left part of the sheet, you'll, you'll see that's the, basically, the attic slash roof plan. And what we've done is we've created a, um, a recess on the sloped roof so that we could hide all of the mechanical units, which are basically just the air conditioning in for the apartment. So you won't see any of the mechanical units from any of the street elevations because they'll all be hidden behind the roofs. Access to the roof will be internal. From one of the staircases, we'll have a, a roof hatch and a ladder that goes up from the storage room, actually, I'm sorry. Chris, can you go to the next page?
When, Mr. Saron, when, when you have a logical break to the next subject, I had a question about the units, the number of units, like.
Okay, I'm happy to answer the question now.
Okay, um, can, can you just give us an overview of the number of units that the, the different types of units? One-bedroom, two-bedroom, how many of each, whether they're in square?
Absolutely. There's, there's 23 units altogether. 22 of them are one-bedroom units that are virtually identical to each other with the exception of their, one's opposite the other, and some have a corner units. But in essence, the 23, 23 of the units, 22 of them.
I'm sorry, you cut out. I think you just went on mute.
I'm sorry about that. I hit my computer. So 22 units of one-bedrooms that are approximately 600 square feet. One of them's a two-bedroom unit that's approximately 1,230 square feet. So that's, that's really a breakdown of the units and, and the spaces.
And, and, you know, one, one of the things that I noticed, um, and I think there was a filed comment on review of the affordability plan was that, um, uh, you haven't yet, you don't, you haven't outlined the plan yet as to which of the units will be affordable? Is that right?
We haven't defined it, which ones would be affordable. We are fully aware of the fact that we need to, you know, equally divide them so that, you know, the affordable ones are equal to the other ones. All the units are gonna be basically the same, same appliances, same cabinetry, same finishes. You know, so we're, we're happy to take any suggestions and work with the town on which ones become the affordable units.
Well, I think, I think it, it, the applicant needs to, in order to comply with the statute, identify a plan which, uh, creates a dispersion of affordable units throughout the building. And I'm curious as to whether that two-bedroom unit will be allocated as affordable or not.
Okay, I guess I'm gonna speak for my client, but, um, I, I honestly, you're gonna have to make that final decision. At this point, I would think that we were not planning on making that one of the affordables, but, um, if need be, we of course could.
Okay. Which one is the unit that's ADA compliant?
So there's, so when you say ADA compliant, the way the code reads and the way ADA reads is there's four different types of accessible units. So, so when you say ADA compliant, there's fully accessible units, which are not required. There's type A units, type B units, and type C units, which are also not required. So in less than 20, in, in 20 units, you have to have one unit that's gonna be a type A unit. Again, we haven't identified that, but most of these units can easily comply with that requirement. None of them are 100%, none of them are 100% handicapped accessible. What the code requires and the statutes require and ADA requires is that you make them so that they're basically adaptable. So sinks are 34 inches in that unit, doorways are 32 inches clear in that unit, which we're gonna, that requirement is gonna be met by almost, by most of these units anyway. So, um, again, we haven't identified exactly which one we're gonna label as quote-unquote a type A unit for accessibility, but none of them are required to be completely accessible.
Right, so, so I see that, um, that there are, and I, I honestly, when I looked at the, the floor plan before, I didn't see the type B, type A, type A1, uh, uh, in, in the mix. How do you?
Yeah, the differences between those is like, type B and B1 are just mirror images of each other.
I see.
Or, or actually, type B is one, type B versus B1 is, we jog the outside of the building to just break up the facade. So that if you look at the type B and the type B1 on the bottom, you'll see it's just one foot shorter on the type B1 versus the type B. The type As are the ones on the ends of the building that have windows on the sides as well as the end of the unit.
Right, I gotcha. And so, um, will there be, um, you know, a, a mix of the affordable units that are, um, you know, compliant with the, the ADA? And I understand that they're not, uh, built out now, but different, um, they're built slightly different specifications to enable them to become. Yeah.
Right, so, so we would propose that it's, it's a requirement of 10%, which is 2.3. So we have two that are type As. One of those we would make affordable.
Okay. All right. And so, so I guess, just to put a, to put a, a fine point on that, the applicant is not opposed to a condition of a, of approval that requires the plan to identify specifically which unit.
We'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, okay.
That would be correct, Commissioner, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Chris, can you, look, can you flip through to the elevations? It should be about to. So, so here's, these are, these are the elevations of the exterior of the building. And really, Chris, you, you probably can just go to the next one, which is, do you have the rendering? It wouldn't have been a separate PDF, but, um, so the exterior of the building, while Chris is looking for that. Yeah, so there you go. So, so this is kind of, this is a view basically from the corner of Black Rock and Castle. So you can see the building's elevated on, on piers. The exterior of the building will be, um, plywood siding, asphalt chingle roof, clad wood windows. We added some, we have some landscaping around the perimeter of the building. The way the site works is the building is kind of built into the back of the site because the slight slopes up five or six feet from the street on Castle going up Black Rock Turnpike. So, so we have retaining walls, different heights around on Castle, virtually at grade. But as you go along the back of the building and on the, on the north side of the building there, you'll have some retaining wall. So, um, and as I said earlier, we elevated the building up so that we could, um, maximize the height underneath it so we can get vehicles underneath there in case of an emergency.
Yeah, what's the, what's the, the, the height on the entry and, and in the garage, do you know?
Yeah, I do know. It's nine and a half, nine foot six clear. And based on my research, most, any, uh, ambulance and the fire department, um, emergency vehicle would fit underneath there. Obviously, a fire truck wouldn't fit underneath there. We've run this by, I've met with the fire marshal twice, and, um, I believe he's fine with that. But we, of course, if they needed us to tweak that dimension, we'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
I think originally, we were at eight and a half feet before, um, he expressed that concern.
Yeah.
So that's, that's really kind of an overview of the project. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks. Can you go to, you, you, you mentioned, uh, changing, um, you know, the ingress and egress, you know, through the garage and the right turn. Can you go back to that, um, the slide that you was doing?
Chris, it'll probably be, yeah, there you go, so. And I really, I, Mike Galante probably don't want to really address this, but I'll kind of give you a quick overview. I mean, um, on the bottom, at one point, we had the driveway over towards the right-hand side of the sheet. We moved the driveway closer to the corner, um, because it gave a sightline. So the, so when you come out of the driveway, it's a right turn only, um, to get out of the driveway. So it, this really, this driveway just circles around dead ends and then circles back. But Mike's really probably the person to address the, um, the traffic flow of that better than I can.
Okay, uh, even within, even within the, the garage?
Well, within the garage, I mean, you drive in, basically, you just loop around. We have a turnaround space on the right-hand side so that you don't just end up in a dead end and have to back up. So that's why the one space that, yeah, so Chris, if you move that cursor just to the left there where the crosshairs spaces, that's just, that's a turnaround, so that if you come down the end of that and you can't find a parking space, you can turn around there and get back out.
I see. And is that, is that big enough for like an ambulance?
Size of a car. It's a parking space size.
What would an ambulance do?
So an ambulance, I mean, an ambulance would have to do the same thing. Most likely, an ambulance is just gonna drive into the lobby and, and stop at that stair where the elevator is, and then probably back out, um, would, is what I would imagine.
The parking space there in the corner that's crosshanded is no parking. Supposed to be reserved for a turnaround, and it is the, it's the size of a, a regular parking space.
Right, it's nine by, it's nine by 18, correct? An ambulance could fit in if they wanted to.
Yeah. Are the, are the spaces, the, the parking spaces assigned?
We honestly haven't gotten into that conversation. I mean, um, again, if that was something the commission wanted us to assign parking spaces, we could. But generally, in these situations, we're not usually inclined to assign parking spaces.
Yeah, I mean, I, I suppose, so, so, so to get into the parking a little bit, I mean, I, I think I, I understand that, um, from some of the materials, that you need to eliminate six parking spaces on street in order to gain adequate sightlines? Or did you fix that by moving the driveway?
Well, that's, I'm gonna let Mike address that, but, um, I believe, we still are not gonna be parking in front of the building. But we didn't take, what got eliminated on the street, we didn't take into account for, for our parking here. We provided 26 spaces for the 23 units, which we thought was adequate.
Yeah, Mr. Jim, I'll, I'll, I'll answer those questions in a few minutes.
Okay, fair, fair enough. Very good. So 26 for 23 is a little more than one space per unit?
That is correct. And we do have the two handicap spaces, one of which is a van-accessible handicap, so it's size different than a regular handicap space.
Right.
And we do have the, we have more than a, the van handicap parking requirement, this is a much, is a lower height than the ambulance. So we, we have plenty of height for vans to pull in and park.
Right. And, um, garbage dumpsters, uh, that kind of utilities?
We put the dumpsters near where the main, where the entrance is so that the garbage truck can basically just pull to the driveway, into the driveway, roll the dumpster out, take it and go. It's not under the building. The building starts past the dumpsters.
Are those on streets?
You could see that better on the elevate, on the, um, on the elevation, Chris. Can you move back to the elevate, the rendering?
So the, so the area there that's got the fence in the front of it, that's really where the dumpster. We don't want the dumpster under the building because it would have been much more difficult. Plus, we don't want to store trash under the building.
Are those like rollouts so that the truck lifts it up, or?
Yes, they would be rollouts.
Nice. All right, any other, I presume, just finishing up. Does any other commissioner have any questions for Mr. Saron?
And I'll be here a few days later.
Yeah, Commissioner Berman, thank you.
Mr. Saron, so, uh, looking at the code review minutes from, uh, fire, uh, the fire marshal. Uh, Mr. Serone, so, uh, looking at the code review minutes from, uh, fire, uh, the fire marshal, uh, one of the points that, uh, was made was that emergency parking is extremely hazardous. And is it your understanding that was, uh, solely related to the height of the garage at the time, uh, of the design? That was before the, the code review committee? Or is that, um, related to, uh, turnarounds and the parking or some, some other issue?
It was my understanding that his concern was hazardous because they'd be parking on the street and trying to wheel people out from underneath the building. Um, so that was, that was my understanding and that's why I thought we solved it. I did meet with the fire marshal, I, I met with him two or three times, but at least once after the code review. And he was satisfied with the solutions that we came up with at that point. Um, so this, this, this review was written obviously before we made any of these modifications to the project.
Yeah, I, I, I understand, um, and, and, um, just a question from Mr. Wen. Can, can we get to comment from the fire, uh, department on the most recent set of plans as we've done for other projects?
Yeah, we can certainly confirm that, uh, they have reviewed the revisions that have been made subsequent to the code meeting.
Great, and there, there were obviously other comments from the fire department as well in code review. Uh, it would be good to know whether those have been addressed in the most recent iteration of the design.
We can do that.
Uh, and, and then, uh, has there been, um, uh, thought given to a sprinkler system? Is that included in the, the current version of the design?
Oh, absolutely, the code, the code wouldn't let us build this building without a fire sprinkler system. And as a matter of fact, one of the other things, and I see it's on his, it was on his code list, but we, we actually did a diagram for him which located all the hydrants in the area. And then based on that, we added a fire hydrant, just on his requirement to get a hydrant closer to the building.
Yeah, I saw, I saw that there was an additional hydrant noted on the site plan.
Right, and we also, we also relocated this fire sprinkler room because that's where they tie into based on conversations with him. So, um, I believe we've addressed all those things. I mean, obviously, some of the things like the full set of drawings, construction drawings aren't going to be done until we do the construction drawings. But I believe we've addressed his list.
Yeah, as Commissioner Brown will also be.
On the project at some point if it goes ahead.
Commissioner Berman, also Ray Rizio for the record, it, it would be a full thirteen hour system. We're not looking to do, you know, in some of the residential apartments where they only have to do the hotspots. It'll be a full system, they don't have sprinklers, you know, in every, in every, in every location. I think that is one of the things that has made the fire marshal feel comfortable, uh, in, on previous applications. Additionally, uh, Phil, did you discuss the changing of the door so that you can have the door? Um, you can now exit the staircase out onto the sidewalk over Black Rock Turnpike?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, John, that's all I had at this time.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other commissioners? And with the shared screen, I only have one view, so I won't be able to see if you just raise your hand. Um, I'm just trying to cycle through all of the, um, the, the grids. Okay, you none? Commissioner Braun?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, go ahead.
It looks, can you, is this thing built out to the very, is the building at the very edge of the property line? It looks like it is from some of the plans.
Chris, if you put up, if you look at the site plan, it'll locate it best for us, so.
Looking at, um.
So here you can see the site plan, so the building is very close to the property line on, not so much on, on the Castle Avenue side, we're about ten feet off. But on the, and, and honestly, on the back of the building, the parking goes to the park property line, but the building's about twenty feet off of it. On, on the right hand or the north side, except for the stair tower, the building's about fifteen, eighteen feet off of it. And on the Black Rock Turnpike side, it staggers back and forth, anywhere is between a few feet and twenty something feet. So it's really not, except for a couple of locations, probably, except for one or two locations, it's not on the property line.
And is this, you said twenty-six spaces, two of which are handicapped or, I'm looking at the code review.
That's the key, your line.
Did the, the code review was done in Jan- January seventh, but most of the plans were before that. So did they see, then some of the plans are like around January fourth? Uh, did the, state police and everybody else see revised plans? Or were they all, have they seen the plans we're looking at now, I guess?
Well, so I, the best answer I could give you to that question is we did the code review. We obviously modified the code review based on the code review. We didn't have a second code review, we did meet with the fire marshal after that. Um, I don't know that anybody in town or anybody sent them to any of the other departments for a second review.
So I have plans with several dates on them. What is the plan date that we're supposed to be looking at them? Cause I'm looking at all kinds of plans from December, a couple of them are dated early January. I guess some.
The plans that were, the plans that were submitted that are part of this meeting and part of the record and we're asking for approval on tonight are dated six twenty-nine twenty twenty for the, for A, for the first sheet. The next sheet is one ten.
Oh, June twenty-ninth?
The date is different dates, honestly, I could go through each one, but there's different dates on it based on different times we made revisions to them. But the ones you're looking at are the plans that were submitted as part of the application.
Which was before or after the code review?
All, all of them after the code review.
After the code review?
Yes, because we updated all the plans, at least on the code review.
Okay, I should have known any plans that are dated December twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen?
I, I, none of, none of, none of the plans that are submitted were dated, dated, none of the architectural plans are dated in December that were submitted for approval.
I'm looking at something here.
But you should have, I'm sorry, I'm not, I don't know who's.
I have a site layout plan, a site layout plan?
Could have the drawings that we submitted as the application.
Okay, well, I'm looking at something I got attached to a July fifteenth, twenty twenty letter to Laura Pooley and it has some plans dated December twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen, a site layout plan. Is that something that's been superseded by a later one? Also drainage phase plan and a.
So I can't, those aren't my.
So I should ignore whatever that is.
This, this is too wet for the record. Kathy, if you look above the title block, there's three different revision dates. The title block has the original plan date and above the, where it says site layout plan, you can see it on the screen here. There are three different revision dates that describe what was changed on those dates.
I'm, okay, I see what you're presenting. So I was given an attachment which was a PDF with a whole bunch of stuff. Should I ignore anything that's predates what I'm looking at now? Is this?
Kathy, Commissioner Braun, Commissioner Braun, you, you should not ignore any of the materials that were circulated by Mr. Wen as part of the application that we are considering. If you look at the site plan layout, there are revision dates. There was one on January sixth, there was a date of January twenty-fourth and a revision date of July fifteenth. Even though there may be like a main date that says that the document was dated originally in January, all right? You have another document which has, has a cover letter to Laura Pooley, July fifteenth, that explains how those sites were changed. Now coincides with revision on the site plan.
Okay. So, I guess my question is, all of the concerns raised by the fire and the police, and there were quite a few, have those been addressed in the revised plans that are dated sometime in June?
That is what, what Mr. Serone just, um, testified.
Okay, they said there's not enough parking spaces? Um.
Well, yeah, so he referred to, I mean, um, I, Wickman referred to twenty parking spaces, we have twenty-six now. So again, we've updated all the drawings based on comments. We believe we've addressed the elements where the code review. And I think that some of the stuff you have in the file is just the process as it went along. It was conversation with engineering, with fire and other departments along the way to make sure that we got done what we were supposed to get done. So that's, the final drawings are the ones that you're looking at tonight, what you probably otherwise have in your file. It's part of the process to get there.
Okay, because they also said something about emergency access, but you're saying now that it's nine and a half feet tall and that's high enough for an ambulance to get in. Um, where would delivery trucks or moving vans or anything like that, um, do they go under the building? Or is there a place in front or to the side, it's hard to tell from the rendering, where would they go?
Right, so I mean, moving vans would have to park probably on the street depending if it's, I mean, if it was a small enough truck, it could sit under nine and a half feet. If it's a small panel truck, it'll go underneath. If it's a big moving van, which is a bedroom apartment, they're definitely going to have really big trucks, but it would also have to park down the street.
The, there's a little space to the left, like on, on Castle. Is that a parking space or is that, is that somebody's parking space or is that a place where a moving van could go? Like is that three yellow pieces in front of it?
If we're looking right on the street where it says Castle and you see two lines that are going up and down the sheet, that's a stop bar, actually, that's where the stop sign's being moved.
Okay.
That when he talks.
Okay.
Yes, and also, on the south, the south side of Castle Avenue, it permits parking across the street.
Right, and I, I'm not trying to avoid answering anybody's questions, but I think a lot of these questions will get answered when Jim and Mike do their presentation, so maybe we can kind of move forward on those and then come back to whatever questions people have. I'm not, I don't want to answer the questions on their behalf.
No, of course not, sure. And I mean, and the, the point, um, my, my asking, uh, commissioners if they had any questions for you in this, in this environment was really, you know, as an architect, going through the site plan, units, the construction, uh, all that kind of, so does, does anyone else have any more questions from Mr. Serone on, on the material that he presented?
Did I hear that there's parking across Castle Ave for this facility?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that question.
Did I hear you wrong? Did you just say that there's parking for overflow purposes across Castle Ave on that parking lot?
Right, so across the street, there's on-street parking.
On-street parking.
On-street, not in that parking lot, thank you, that's all.
On-street. Okay, I know, I know this is a, a challenge for everyone and, and I apologize for that and I appreciate everybody's patience. It's not the easiest thing in the world to follow along as these things are rolling out, the connection issues. Um, you know, we can't really see body language and, so, um, and sometimes it's very difficult to hear what people are, lots, a lot of background noise at the moment. Um, I think that for the moment, Mr. Serone. You're out.
Got that, I see myself now.
Hello?
The, Attorney.
Right, I'm back, can you hear me? Hey, we've lowered our volume in case there's any, uh, interference, is that okay from a?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's much better, thank you.
Great, you're welcome. I always thought every chairman's dream was to have a mute button.
So, yeah. Took the controls away from me, nah, she's, uh, but it is, it is a challenge, I mean, everybody's connection is different and, you know.
I got you. Chairman, I'm gonna try and make it a little shorter. One of the things that, um, I have our, our engineer Jim Casitas is available for answer, to answer some questions. But, uh, Commissioner Braun did bring up that whether other, other, um, departments have managed to see the plans and comment on the plans that have, that have evolved. And, uh, the one that you'll see in your, the most important one as relates to Mr. Casitas, and I'll take you through, uh, Laura Pooley. There was a, on July fifteenth, Mr. Casitas, uh, submitted a revised site plan and drainage, stormwater drainage plan. And on July twenty-fourth, uh, it should be in record, Laura Pooley wrote a letter to Jim Wen that said she's reviewed the recently submitted proposed development prepared by Casitas, last amended on July fifteenth, two thousand twenty. With regard to revisions to stormwater drainage plan and required onsite detention plans, satisfy the majority of my concerns discussed in record in the code enforcement meeting. All catch basins shall have a three-foot deep sump and should be shown in the detail for catch basin on sheet two or three. Strongly recommend using green infrastructure in the site as done is included in this site plan. We will agree to both those things as conditions of approval. Site plan is shown in pit sheet one of three now calls out relocating the stop bar, installing an ADA compliant sidewalk ramp closer to Black Rock Turnpike, which does provide improvements to the sightline vehicles for vehicles exiting Black Rock Turnpike from Castle Avenue. In addition, I would recommend the applicant install a painted crosswalk across Castle Avenue connecting the new ADA ramp to the existing ramp on the south side of Castle Avenue. We will agree to that as a condition of approval also. Finally, she wrote her view of the traffic report indicates that to achieve adequate intersection site distance, this proposal, dragway, six on-street parking spaces along the north side of Castle Avenue must be removed. Five are located in front of the site, one space is to the east, but an adjacent to this site in front of the Cuado property. The police commission must approve the posting of no parking signs for these spaces. If required, uh, uh, intersection site distance is to be achieved. If approval is not granted, then the intersection, intersection site distance, uh, would, would not be met. So we, we would agree to that as a condition of approval, that we will remove those site distances and seek approval from the police commission.
So, so, I can't, I can't, the condition of approval, I, the, the, the TPD cannot condition approval of an application on the, uh, the conduct of another agency.
That's correct.
Uh, so, so, um, how do, why, how do you propose that we are to, to deal with that circumstance where the, um, the sightline distances, I think what you acknowledge, which Ms. Pooley here state, are, are insufficient? Uh, and that in order to achieve them, you need to gain, uh, you know, approval, action by another department. And so as it exists today, this is not a safe construction. It's not, it's not a, the, the, the site plan as laid out is, is unsafe. How do I deal with that?
Did you ask me or Emmeline?
I'm asking you, Attorney Rizio.
Oh, it was my, I'm gonna have Mr., uh, Galante address those issues. I think it's, it's, and we, we spoke with Jim about it and, and you can correct me, Jim, that we're supposed to go to the police department after, after you received approval here, if that's not correct. Or Michael, can you address that?
I'd, I'd like to answer the question, I'd like to. In all the applications in town and in, and quite frankly, in every other town, we go through the process, planning, zoning, review, as we are tonight. We receive approval hopefully and I don't remember any application, certainly not in FAFIA where a condition of approval said, and Chairman, you're correct, that we need to, in this case, the police commission. It's kind of understood that we have to do that after the fact of the planning zoning process. Uh, it's very typical and it's almost an automatic process to go and have this, no, no parking signs installed. Uh, I am almost never, I'm in front of the police commission on a regular basis for much bigger issues as far as traffic and safety and so on. But I very rarely go before the police commission to ask them then to remove parking for a new driveway. It's almost a given that that will happen. And I don't mean to say it and brush it off as not an issue, but it's a process that we go through and it's almost, I don't want to say automatic, but it's part of the process after we receive approval from your commission.
And so in, in other circumstances where that, um, has been the case.
Yeah.
Uh, the, the applicant has provided for parking spaces to replace those that they seek to eliminate on the street, right?
More recently, the answer is yes.
Right, right, so is, is the applicant, be, be, because what, what you're proposing is to take away a public benefit of, of on-street parking in this neighborhood to enable your client to build a development for private parking that will exist only for the tenants of this building, right?
Um, correct, unless the applicant, in this case, the owner, offers parking spaces to the town for public use. And I, I'll leave that, that decision.
And, and so i- in that event. And, and so i- in that event, um, you know, then you, 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 you're gonna drop down from 23 parking spaces.
Twenty-six.
It's, oh, sorry, 23 units, 26 down to, to 20 units, uh, sorry, 26 spaces, 20 units. So you drop from 26 spaces down to 20 units, uh, 20 spaces. I apologize, I keep mincing those words.
That's okay.
Do, it, it, is 20 parking spaces for 23 units sufficient?
Well, that's basically one space per unit, if you will, and this commission approved that in a couple of other cases. These are one-bedroom units. Uh, we didn't take any credit for someone walking to, I know the train station is pretty far away, in my opinion, but there's no credit applied for that. There's no credit applied for someone walking to a bus stop that's nearby or someone that may work on King's Highway, for example. So we're looking at this as a pure standalone building with parking for it. As far as the parking spaces to be eliminated on Castle Avenue, which is where that would be, I say in my report, six spaces, but in reality, it's more like four spaces. And the reason is I counted parking spaces on Castle Avenue in front of the site that go right up to the stop bar that exists today as you see in the plan. If you look at the center line, which is the dash line on that plan, lane gets, you know, tighter and tighter as you approach the Castle Avenue, Black Rock Turnpike approach. And that's about 12 feet wide. Theoretically, you, you don't park a car in a 12-foot wide lane and then have a travel lane in that same space. So I was very conservative. It's really more like four spaces and, and we're still taking spaces off, but it's, it's a little bit better. I was very, you know, I'm usually very conservative.
Yeah, I, I, so I think that the spaces, first of all, there are spaces that are, are being removed as a, as a result of the curb cut, right?
Correct.
And then, and then you've got, um, Ms. Pooley, who, you know, you, you may have said, you know, well, it may be four or whatever. Ms. Pooley, in her own words, says that it's, it's six spaces.
Yeah, and I, I spoke with her directly and the six is from my report.
Okay, and, 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 okay, at that, then you even say in your own report, six spaces. So let's just, let's just call it six. Um, uh, i- i- if, if in all, all fairness to the public, the applicant here, um, allocated the six spaces that they were seeking to remove from the public use, uh, from, from the garage and allocate those for public, public use. The straightforward question that, that we have to determine is whether the number of parking spaces is, is sufficient for this building in this application.
Okay. I mean, you know, generally one space per unit for one bedroom unit is, is sufficient, but maybe we don't dedicate six spaces to the public. Uh, I mean, I think these spaces might be needed during the day for someone that might be working across the street or at the middle of dealership or whatever. But at night, you know, the parking space would be more valuable to the resident of this new building. So maybe this is a different approach we can consider as far as parking for the public, as far as, you know, a resident in the neighborhood or someone working in an office building nearby. Which, by the way, has, you know, sufficient parking across the street in the back of that building.
In the, in the parking lot, the private parking lot?
The office building.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I analyzed it by any means, but just saying there are enough parking spaces there to accommodate that building, its needs, I would assume.
Right. Yeah, I, I, I hear you. I hear you. I mean, it, it's just, it is, it is a wrinkle, uh, in the application that, um, you know, we, we have to deal with. I mean, as, as proposed, um, those, those spaces have not been eliminated. I understand your, your testimony, uh, you want the approval after the fact to go to the police commission. If the police commission doesn't approve, does not approve the removal of those parking spaces for whatever reason, then you won't have sightlines and the project can't be built, right?
If I may refer to a, a more recent application that I was involved with as well as this commission, which was on High Street. I meant removing on-street parking on High Street, uh, in that shoulder area, if you will, with the shoulder line there.
Yeah.
There was no discussion in that case of putting parking, making parking available on that site for ending, being removed from High Street. I'm, I'm just comparing, you know, what we did more recently for comparison purposes. And I believe on Uncle Place, I don't believe we suggested replacing three spaces that it's, we're taking off the street into that parking lot. So.
There, there was, I mean, and I think that there, you know, there, there is a difference between, you know, one or two and six.
Yeah, fair enough.
Okay.
Fair enough.
And so, um, but, you know, I, I'm just trying to, you know, understand the landscape from your perspective. If the police commission for some reason does not approve the, um, removal of the six spaces, uh, no parking for whatever number of space it is for the relevant distance, then, um, you know, the, the, the proposal can't be built, right?
I believe that to Ray Rizio to make that response, but I mean, if we have approval from the commission, I don't know, I don't know how the police commission fits into that approval.
Well, they're the ones that have to approve the removal of the parking spaces.
Correct.
To do that.
Correct.
Okay.
But I haven't seen it tied to an approval from P and Z in as many years as I've worked in town.
No, I, I, I understand that and I can't condition an approval based on what the police commission can do.
That's right.
It's, it's just, I'm, I'm just trying to, you know, understand for, for the purposes of the record and then flesh it out that, you know, if, uh, the commission doesn't, for some reason, approve of the removal of those parking spaces and posting no parking, you know, along the strip, then that sightline can be.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think in this instance, if, if you excuse me one second, Mike, I think in this instance, it's similar to what you do all the time when you gotta get a DOT approval on a curb cut. Where you've got to get any kind of, uh, additional approval. And in this instance, I think you could also, if you wanted to say, if we did not get, um, if we did not achieve, for some reason, the police commission did not approve it, you could may say that we would make, Michael's, Michael really believes, and I, I agree with him, that there's not six spaces, it's more like four. If you can state that we would agree to remove, uh, we would make three spaces available to the public, then we would end up with still at one, one space per unit, which is similar to a few of the approvals that have recently come by. This way, this way, there, there would be, there, there would, there would, there would, there would be a safety net there. But similar, I, I, we have it whenever there's any kind of ac- action on a state road, if the DOT says no, you, you can't get, you, you can't, you can't get your permit because we don't want a light there. Are you showing that a light goes there? We know all about that, that from, then, then, then there's no approval. We gotta come back to you or go back to the drawing board.
Yeah.
I believe, I believe, I believe you're okay in proceeding the way Mike does and we're comfortable going to the police commission because we're confident that we're approved. If we don't get the approval, the commission would feel more comfortable, have a safety net of saying that we would reserve three spaces for the public. I, I think that's, I think that, I, I think we could agree to that.
Okay. All right, very good. Unless another commissioner has any questions specifically with respect to the removal of the parking spaces and, 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 and that, um, you should move on. Anyone else?
I, I do, Mr. Chair, if I, just briefly, uh, I think on the issue of whether this commission can condition an approval on, on necessary, um, uh, action by another, uh, municipal agency, you know, the, the notion that we are powerless to make such a condition may be too broad a statement of the law. As Attorney Rizio indicates, you know, there's certainly situations where the state DOT has to approve something in order, uh, for the project to be built. So i- i- if I'm, if I could ask the applicant, uh, you know, Attorney Rizio, if he would submit to us case law on our ability, uh, to condition the approval on the action by the police, police commission, um, you seem to be confident, Mr. Galante is confident that that approval will be forthcoming, but you know, if, if, uh, if we could get a, a statement from the applicant of what your position is as to the law on that, I think we could, uh, you know, move forward more, uh, with, with greater certainty, because I, I do believe that there is appellate and supreme court case law on that, that issue.
I'd be happy to do that, Commissioner. Um, and we'd also make it a, a, um, I know this sounds weird, it's, when you make it a self-imposed commission, uh, there, it's, it's different than, than you, you, it's in our plans than the commission, uh, coming in with, coming up with a condition at a, at a, on something that hasn't been asked for or requested. We will, we will address, we, we will address those as Commissioner Bramon suggested.
Very good. Thank you. Excellent suggestion. Thank you. Anyone else?
A question.
Okay, Commissioner Braun, and then I heard someone else.
Commissioner Gordon.
Okay, so Commissioner Braun first, then Commissioner Gordon, go ahead.
The six on-street, just so I understand, the six on-street parking spaces are all along the same side of Castle Avenue as the building. That's the north side of Castle Avenue. And they're all along this property line, but then one of them is in front of the adjacent property known as the Cuervo, Cuero, Cueto property. Is that the neighboring property owners? So you would be proposing to remove a parking space in front of their, another house, not in front of this property?
That's correct.
And also, is that, this whole area, is that where the garbage truck and the moving vans are also supposed to park? Uh, um, won't that kind of defeat the purpose if they have to stop in the same location that you're clearing in order to have sightline?
No, I think that what we've been was the, in the, anybody had to park, uh, the south side of Castle Avenue is wide open. I, I mean, I go by that property, those properties almost every day. And there's no reason for anyone to park on the south side of Castle Avenue.
So the garbage truck on the south side of Castle Avenue, not on, not next to the building?
You, you, you had asked Commissioner Braun, where would, if a moving truck that couldn't fit under the building, where could it park legally? And I was gonna say, there is parking available on the south side of Castle Avenue, still available directly across the street from the, from the entrance to the building.
But that's not where the garbage truck would park, right? That would have to park next to the building or would they also park on the south side and then cross over the road to move the barrels of garbage back and forth?
Garbage truck is very quick pickup early in the morning. I couldn't, I don't see that as an issue.
But that would have to park in the no parking zone, I assume.
They do it everywhere. They, they pick up and they go.
Okay, thank you.
I just was confused about something that you were saying to get rid of the six spaces, but then you were talking about giving spaces to the building and to the public. Where are those spaces being given from?
So, uh, the 26 spaces that are presently shown on the, on the site plan.
Yes.
The, the applicant, if, uh, they are, um, going to eliminate parking on the street from the public, would take, in Ray Rizio, Attorney Rizio's proposal, would take three of those 26 spaces and earmark those as public spaces.
Okay, and then what was he talking about that we give to the apartment building or is that, maybe I misheard something?
I think you misheard that. So in order to, chief sightlines, they need to eliminate a number.
That I got, yeah, okay.
Right? And, you know, that is eliminating a, a, a public benefit. And so to accommodate that or offset that.
That would be from inside the building.
Correct.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
And, and every time you add, um, a curb cut, you're taking away where this parking allowed. If this had been a circular drive, you'd be, you'd be eliminating, uh, available spaces. I, I think, uh, as a condition to make three spaces available to the public, I think would be, um, would be, would probably be more in keeping with what's actually going away.
Yep, and I, and I understand and, and I think that we all now grasp the, the, the issues in the, in the proposal. Um, other members of the commission have questions about this? No? Okay, very good. Attorney Rizio, please continue.
Save the commission time, what I thought I was doing, saving the commission time, was reading in Laura Pooley's comments with regard to the engineering. Jim Casitas is here. If anybody has specific questions about, we are public sit, public water, public sewer. If you have any specific conditions about, questions about drainage, um, all that's been addressed by Laura and approved by Laura, uh, but would be happy to answer any questions the commission may have, um, rather than have Jim Casitas take you through the whole plan that he's just been, that's been summarized by Laura's ladder.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Casitas? No, I'm hearing none. Please move forward. I don't think, and, and there are no, there are no further questions for Mr. Casitas.
Great. Uh, then I'd like to, the man you've been waiting for, Mr. Galante, would, would you please, uh, take over the microphone and take, take the commission through your traffic report, parking analysis and interior and exterior circulation?
Okay, and Chris, if you don't mind, would you go back to the site plan that was just up for a while? And I just want to touch on a couple of things that we, thank you. Uh, again, Mike Galante, uh, traffic consultant for the applicant, Odyssey and Hannel. Um, if you notice on this, and, uh, this driveway is located, let's call it, uh, the sudley or westerly side of Castle Avenue closest to Black Rock Turnpike. And it is an out-only driveway for right turn movement. And this graphic, this site plan shows an entrance to the right of that with an island in the middle. Uh, just for clarification, we actually propose a right turn in only into the site from Castle Avenue. Uh, my discussions with Bill Hurley about a week ago, he asked if we would consider a, a, an entrance driveway on the eastly side of this site where we originally had the driveway and an exit only on the westerly side. I guess that's a consideration and a thought, uh, we're not showing it here, we're open for that discussion, but we showed a place where it is and that's based on my discussions with Laura Pooley as far as separation from Black Rock Turnpike. Uh, I recommend that shifting the stop bar on Castle closer to Black Rock to get better sightlines and greater separation between Black Rock and our proposed driveway. Um, so it's a combination of different things. And as Mr. Rizio mentioned, uh, Laura Pooley suggested a crosswalk along or front of Castle Avenue at, uh, Black Rock Turnpike, which we would certainly agree to. Uh, we may actually shift the stop bar slightly in, in order to provide the crosswalk, which would be closer to Black Rock to get the, you know, direct connection between the existing sidewalks. Our side, of course, will have a sidewalk along Castle Avenue, uh, and I believe there's one already along Black Rock Turnpike, uh, it may be replaced. Um, so I just want to touch on that before I get into the traffic and then we can always go back to this if we need to.
Mr. Chairman, this is Jim Went. For the record, if, Mr. Galante, sound cutoff for a second or when, I just wanted to, I thought I heard him say that the Castle Avenue ingress would be a right-hand turn only. Is that correct or did I not hear that correctly?
Uh, you're, you're correct. It's a right turn inbound only from Castle Avenue.
So coming, coming off Black Rock Turnpike into Castle Avenue, I cannot make a left turn into the development?
That's correct. That, that's my recommendation.
How do you, how do you police that? How do you manage that?
Well, it's through signing in the, the placement of a center island, which is, I don't want to say typical, but you find it in many places. Can someone make that left turn in anyhow? The answer is of course they can.
But that's not, that island does not prohibit or in, influence a, a right turn only in like the right turn only out. It has, you know, that has a little bend to it.
Yeah, the way it's shown, you, you are correct, it's permitting a left turn into the driveway, the way it's shown.
And, and is the way it's shown not the way you propose it to be?
I propose it to be a right turn in only so that I, triangle in the middle would be similar to the way it is for the exiting lane. And I guess we all missed it on the final plan.
Okay, so it's a mistake. It should, it should be different.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I wouldn't call it a mistake. It's, it was a change maybe during this process, it'd be going off in many, many months.
Well, listen, it's either accurate or.
It's okay, it's incorrect, it's incorrect.
Okay. So, so that should be like more of a, of a, of a triangle, or like a, a, a right triangle shape, uh, which would, would inhibit a left turn in.
Correct. And just to touch on what Bill, Bill Hurley discussed last week, if we had an entrance only on the eastly side of the driveway, then you would permit the left turn into the driveway and you have full circulation through the parking area, parking garage.
And in, in which case, then you would have one way in and one way out.
Correct.
Now, why wouldn't, why wouldn't you, you propose that?
Well, we don't have a proposed, but if the grades work, then I would say we would consider it absolutely.
Will the grades work? I mean, I have to be honest, it, it, what strikes me is trying to squeeze a whole lot that doesn't fit into a place where it kind of doesn't belong. We don't even have sightlines for crying out loud. And now we're doing a right turn out and somebody turning. And now we're doing a right turnout, and somebody turning into this facility off of Black Rock Turnpike is gonna do what? They're gonna go pull into somebody's driveway and do a K-turn to turn around to make a right turn in?
No, what we've shown in the analysis is that, quite frankly, they use the expression, they're going around the block to get to the site.
And, and you, you honestly think that, that people generally are just gonna go around the block, even though there's a two-way street here, to get to their own building?
Well, keep in mind, not everyone's coming from Black Rock Turnpike to go home to this building. Someone's coming from King's Highway, for example, from the east. They would turn on one of the other side streets to turn into Castle and go in, on Castle to the driveway and turn right into it.
I suppose. In your professional opinion, which design is preferable?
Uh, as far as this one that's shown on the screen, or the two driveways that Mr. Hurley suggested?
Yes, one way in, one way out.
I, the one way in, one way out would be better, just for as far as circulation and permitting a left turn in, and reducing any potential impacts to the neighborhood.
Is it safer?
If you permit a left turn in at that location, on, on the eastly side of the property? I, I would say it would be safe, for sure. You're away from the Black Rock Turnpike intersection.
I mean, the reason that you're advocating these changes, and one way, and a right turn only here, and, and, and the time is, is because you're improving safety, right?
Correct.
Right, so, and what we have to decide is whether the site plan is safe or not. So if your, if your testimony here is that you've made tweaks to make the plan safer, and you're not quite comfortable that you've, you've, you've achieved the, the best plan or the safest plan, there is an alternative design which is actually safer than the one that's on, on paper, the one that we're considering, you know, that, that, we need to know that. So you believe that a safer design would be one way in, one way out, uh, having two driveways?
Well, two driveways doesn't make it safer. We're, I think we're really trying to address the potential left turn in from Castle into the driveway where it's today.
Yeah, that makes it safer. You can make the left-hand turn in if you make the other, if you make the second driveway, sort of further, uh, further, uh...
Northeast.
Northeast, right? And, and then, and enabling a left turn in makes the, that, that, that plan, or that, that, uh, that design is, is safer than the one that's on now. And quite frankly, when I was talking to Mr. Saron, the idea, the concept that residents are gonna draw into this, into this parking lot and then hit a dead end, have to do a K-turn in an allocated parking space, which is probably gonna be filled up at some point, um, and, and, and be stuck in, in a parking lot to have to turn around like that, it is, is a little strange, honestly.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, it is actually Mr. Saron, Phil Saron. Um, so we took a quick look at the grades while this whole conversation was going on, and I've actually talked to Jim Casidis, and we can do that. And the reality is that if we do one way in, one way out, we actually gain a parking space because what we have is a turnaround space we wouldn't need, and we'd have 27 places.
E- e- exactly, exactly, which is, which is what I was about to get to. Um, you know, I, I don't know what that does to, um, uh, sightlines and so forth, but to your point about curb cuts and removal of parking spaces on, on the street, um, you know, quite frankly, you may be in a better position with an additional curb cut in that regard. I, I, I don't know.
And then, this is Mike Galante again, in reference to sightlines, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Sightline, which is measured for exiting movements from the driver, what it's shown on the screen right now, doesn't change. For the sightline for an entrance driveway, there is no sightline measure.
Right, fair.
Nothing changes.
But if you've got a curb cut, if you've got a curb cut in a space, in a place where you would otherwise have to petition the police commissioner to remove the on-street parking, the curb cut basically gets you halfway there.
Correct.
That, that was really my point.
Well, take it, we, we understand. I just wanted to touch on that before we got into the traffic, uh, because I thought it was pretty important to do that.
Is it also safer? No, listen, this is, this is, it's, this is very good and, and, and very productive.
Yes.
Is that, is that alternative design also safer because emergency vehicles and other trucks that fit under the garage can do a full loop and come out the other side?
Sure would be. Yep, yep.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Go to the traffic section. Great, thank you. Uh, all the figures I'm showing in any text or words, the next couple of slides are from the traffic report, there's nothing new in there. Uh, I've just summarized, uh, a couple of things, just to help the commission follow along. Uh, I know you all read the report, that's for sure. Uh, this figure just simply shows the site's location, it's labeled their site as a white and green box around it. Uh, we all know where the site is, on Castle Avenue at the corner of Black Rock Turnpike. Uh, this graphic, uh, we use for inventory, uh, with the travel lanes, location of sidewalks, which highlighted in yellow, uh, the whole area is almost what sidewalks, uh, and it also shows the crosswalks. Uh, if we add the one crosswalk that, uh, Laura Pooley suggested, it'll provide a connection to the existing crosswalks, towards the traffic circle. Um, and we use this, this information for our analyses as far as lane widths, uh, and grades and so on. Uh, Chris, you can go to the next slide, please. Uh, just again, a summary, uh, this traffic study and this application's been going off for quite a while. Uh, we certainly started probably last fall. Uh, we conducted traffic counts on Tuesday, November 19th, 2019, uh, before the holiday season. Our counts are typically seven to nine in the morning and four to six at night, and we identified the peak hours, as we always do, as far as the highest recorded volumes as eight to nine AM in the morning and five to six PM in the afternoon. Now, keep in mind, uh, we're all in a pandemic world today, and, uh, traffic conditions are different. These traffic counts were certainly collected, uh, before any changes in traffic patterns, uh, as far as volume mostly, uh, took, took place in March, April, I guess. Uh, the volumes, just for reference purposes, Black Rock Turnpike certainly has the higher volumes. Uh, it's 900 vehicles, two-way, uh, on Black Rock, basically at the intersection of Castle Avenue in the morning, and it's slightly higher at, at just over a thousand vehicles during the afternoon peak hour. Volume in the morning coming down Black Rock towards the circles, higher than going up the hill if you way, if you will, away from the circle. The PM is not quite balanced, but more balanced in the morning. Castle Avenue, uh, east of the Black Rock Turnpike, along the side frontage, has a total of 45 vehicles in the morning peak and 35 vehicles in the afternoon peak, again, a two-way volume itself. Uh, Chris, you can go to the next one. This is just simply from the report, it shows the traffic, uh, data by turning movements at the intersection along the side frontage. Uh, we focus on this one intersection mainly because the, the level of traffic that we will be adding to the street system and the analysis of that. Uh, thank you. Uh, it shows in those little boxes the pedestrian activity at the intersection. It's not a high pedestrian location, but we always include pedestrian counts, uh, in, in the analyses, uh, as we do any intersection in, in any study area. Uh, this shows the morning peak hour, it just shows the volume of traffic. Uh, you can see the volume coming out of Castle, it's a little bit heavier for a left turn movement, uh, and the right turn is much lighter. That's because, uh, motorists may be using other local streets to reach Black Rock Turnpike, or simply more people want to go towards the Turnpike, or towards Black Rock Turnpike, King's Highway, and so on. Chris? Please, next, next, next slide. Accident, we, accident data, we have obtained accident data from the Fairfield Police Department for 2016 through 2019 traffic condition. Um, I'm just checking to make sure of the dates. Uh, I'm sorry, 2016 through the end of 2018 to three-year period. We obtained the accident data for Black Rock Turnpike, which is a state highway, and of course Castle Avenue, which is a town road. Just focusing on the Black Rock Turnpike, Castle Avenue intersection, which is the second major column, uh, going to, well, about the middle of the page, where it totaled three accidents in a three-year period, and the breakdown was a rear-end collision, one was an angled accident, and one was a side swipe in the same direction. So this stop sign-controlled intersection of Castle at Black Rock Turnpike, uh, is, uh, fortunately, a low accident location as far as, uh, the operation of that intersection. The only accident that refers to really how the intersection operates is that one angled accident, uh, which occurred in a, in a three-year period. Uh, we looked at Castle Avenue near the site frontage, uh, there were basically bent in the site and Black Rock Turnpike during the same three-year period. And this table is really just a summary of all the accident reports we received from the town, uh, police, and we analyzed and provided in a table, uh, format. The accident reports are not included in the appendix of the report because it has personal information, and we typically do not include it, uh, in a report. Uh, next slide, Chris, please. Just go back up a little bit. Okay, just move it up. In the process, we're looking at this development, uh, let's assume it's approved, be built and occupied by the end of 2021. Um, we add traffic related to other developments and a general growth rate or growth factor, uh, based on our discussions with Connecticut DOT Planning Division. And the growth rate for Fairfield, and specifically in this area, actually the whole, whole town is 0.6% per year. That's the growth, if nothing else were to occur. So we add that growth in for a two-year period, uh, and it's compounded, so it's 1.2% over a two-year period. And then there are other major developments, not necessarily nearby, but near the new train station, the Fairfield Metro Station. There are really four other developments down there. One is actually in Bridgeport, the old cinemas on Canfield Avenue, and the other three are generally around the, on the Fairfield side, at the Fairfield Metro Train, Train Station. We, uh, fortunately, we would have consulted on each of those projects, and we added that traffic related to what might occur at the Black Rock Castle Avenue intersection for both the morning and afternoon peak hours. And that's what this figure shows, uh, and it's only for the morning peak. Um, Chris, next, if you don't mind? Development of this type, 23 units, we call it a low-rise development, uh, we follow the trip generation rate, it's better known as ITE. It's a publication for 2017, updated every few years. Uh, it's a national organization that essentially every traffic entity belongs to.
I have, still gonna need you.
I commit that type of traffic that would be generated...
Please mute your line if you're not speaking, please.
I'm sure you don't mean me. Uh, so 23 units would generate 13 trips in the morning, that'd be three trips in, 10 trips out, and during the afternoon peak hour, 11 trips in, that's someone coming home from work or someplace else, and six trips going out for a total of 17 trips. So this development, 23 units, low-rise development, would generate 13 to 17 trips during the morning and afternoon peak hours. Um, as I mentioned before, there's certainly no credit applied to this for someone walking to a train, or walking to a bus stop, or maybe walking to work. Uh, this is straight from the book, as far as what this type of development would generate, uh, during the peak hours. We add this traffic on top of the 2021, what I call no-bill traffic condition, which is the 20, uh, uh, 2019 baseline volumes grown to the 2021 condition with a growth rate in traffic for other developments. And then we add this traffic to the system, and we analyze what we call a billed condition against a no-billed condition, and that essentially gives us what the impact is and the need for any mitigation. Um, so that, that's this, this table three from the traffic report. Chris, the next slide, please? This, uh, graphic, it is again from the report, but it shows the distribution of site traffic. In this case, it refers to a right-in, right-out only that I mentioned before that may change. Uh, the volumes are very low as far as site traffic generation, so the analyses were really, uh, they really wouldn't change that much, to be, to be honest, it just wouldn't change the results and any findings, if you will. But if we need to, we would certainly provide that. But in this case, we're looking at the pattern of traffic, uh, uh, in this case, all exiting traffic is going towards the Black Rock Turnpike intersection, we have 55% going towards the traffic circle, Turnpike, King's Highway, and so on, and we have 45% going up Black Rock Turnpike towards Tungstus Hill and, and beyond. Uh, this is how we relate the 13 and 17 trips to the road system during the peak hours, and adding this to a no-billed condition gives us a billed condition and a future traffic condition for the project itself. Uh, Chris? Should be another one. This is simply the graphic for the morning peak hour with the 13 trips applied to those, uh, distribution patterns and percentages, and it shows the traffic patterns, and this is what we use as a basis to develop the billed traffic volumes. Uh, Chris, next, please? Um, this is site distance, which, uh, I didn't, well, we could have covered it when we looked at the site plan, but, um, as you know, we've expanded the way we collect speed data, uh, based on discussions with Condat, and their, their changing of how they do it, uh, and we are now doing it the way Condat is doing it, I would assume, everywhere. And the town is following that same, those same guidelines, and we're all on the same page as far as how we do it, which is perfectly fine. In this case, we have 3,600 samples, uh, which is about seven days worth of data for Castle Avenue, and it tells us that the 85 percentile speed, which means base, basically 85% of the traffic is traveling at 19 miles per hour, let's call it westbound towards Black Rock Turnpike. And the reason why we look at that is because we are looking at a right turn out of our driveway, and that's the speed we would deal with, and that indicates that we would need 210 feet of site distance, uh, more specifically, intersection site distance coming out of the driveway itself. Uh, profiles and plans have been developed by the team, uh, I believe they were submitted as part of the planned package to the, uh, to the town itself, and it shows this sightline and how we, how we measure it out to the street. We're very aware of crossing driveways with no sidewalks, uh, or driveways with sidewalks, whatever the case may be. And in this case, it's a, a, a driveway on the neighboring property to the, let's call it to the east, uh, that has no sidewalk in front of it, although there would be a sidewalk on, on the front of our property, and we do not touch that driveway, because the assumption is the owner of that property or a tenant or a visitor may park in that driveway and not block a sidewalk. In this case, the sidewalk's not there, so a resident could park in the driveway up to the curb line among Castle Avenue. So we've taken that into account, and we use the 210 feet of site distance, which was the reason why we moved the driveway from the eastly side of the property line to the westerly side of the property line towards Black Rock Turnpike. That location was selected, discussed with the town, engineering department, and the placement of that driveway was based on those discussion. So we meet the standard for intersection site distance, uh, and Chairman, as you, you may say, you know, does this indicate a safe driveway? Well, it meets the standards. And, uh, another time you asked me, why do you have exactly 210 feet? Would it be more than that? And why is it exactly what you need? And state standard is we show what we need, and that's what we're required to maintain, and that, that's why it's written that way.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Just, so in, in, in the alternative plan that we were discussing with, with two driveways, one in only and one out only, would the out only, in your opinion, should that continue to be a right turn only? Or if you make it two driveways, would that then go back to, uh, you know, a, a, a right or left turn?
Well, I would suggest leaving it as a right turn out only, so the exiting traffic goes towards Black Rock Turnpike. And my other main reason, and I had this discussion with, uh, Bill Hurley and probably Laura Pooley in separate phone calls, and discuss, uh, because of its closeness to the Black Rock Turnpike, I would prefer to keep it as a right turn out only.
Okay.
Okay. Certainly thought about it. Okay. All right, and Chris, I think this will... Yes, someone?
Commissioner Nunez?
Yes, yes. Commissioner Nunez.
Attorney Russo, can you go back to about eight or, uh, page eight or nine on that present? Thank you. Maybe, um, Mr. Galante, maybe I didn't appreciate this earlier, but in looking at this, in the site plan, you're, for the driveway, you're saying it should be a right, uh, only, meaning the exit, the side, you have to go to Black Rock Turnpike, correct?
Yes.
Now, at Black Rock Turnpike, are, are you allowing them to, they will be allowed to take a left-hand turn onto Black Rock Turnpike, correct?
Yes.
Okay, because that's, that's an existing condition as it is?
Yes, and I, uh, so we actually looked at that also, as far as do we want to prohibit the left turn? And the reason why we did not, as part of the analyses, is one, the volume is very low, two, there was really no accident history at that intersection, and we're adding very little traffic to the intersection. Certainly thought about it, and considered it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Chris, if you go back to the end, I think there should be one slide, uh, that one there, yeah, thank you. Uh, this is table six from our report, and this, that this commission likes to see just for reference purposes. It's simply a table that shows, well, what is the increase in traffic, in this case, at the Black Rock Turnpike, Castle Avenue intersection, when we add our site traffic to the no-billed condition? And it's a 1.2% uh, in a billed condition with the site traffic added, and on the far right is 1.1%. Uh, that equates to a two-year growth rate, uh, if nothing was to happen on every roadway, just for reference purposes. So it's a very little increase in traffic. Obviously, Black Rock Turnpike has the highest volume, but it's part of the intersection, and we provide this table really for just reference purposes. Uh, that's, that's it for my presentation, I can certainly answer more questions, uh, as needed.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any, any commissioners have any other questions for Mr. Galante? Please raise your hand. No? Okay, very good. Attorney Rizzio.
Be clear that we would agree to that as a condition of approval, that we would agree to the Mr. Galante's recommendations tonight to make that a, you know, as you discussed, to have basically two driveways, an in and out. Basically, the, the eastern driveway will be the entrance and the western driveway, we'll call it, Castle Avenue will be the exit, and we would agree to a right turn only out of that driveway. We would also state that as a condition of approval, the turnaround, the turnaround spot will now be our 27th parking spot, and that that spot, and that we would agree that three of those spaces, three spaces would be compensatory and open to public. Which would still give us 24 spaces, which would give us one space per unit, which is consistent with the number of the affordable housing 8-30G applications that have been before the commission. One other thing that I'd like to add, and Commissioner Brown, and I appreciate, and hopefully short-circuiting this and getting to as far as conclusion, conclusions we can, the beauty of these Zoom things is we actually get to do some legal research while, while we, while we, while we, while we wait and listen to some things. And it's very clear in pulling out, in pulling out the fuller book on zoning, that there's two very specific cases, Supreme Court cases. Number one would be there's an exception that you're currently correcting. Chairman, with regard to subdivisions and certain types of approvals, if you generally cannot make a sub, you cannot make a subdivision approval contingent on another, on another application, another, on another department. However, an exception to this general exists with regard to special permits, where a special permit is granted and approval is made reasonably conditional, action by other agency or agencies or which the zoning authority has no control. Issuance of a special permit will not be held invalid solely because of the existence of any such condition. That is Jarvis Acres, I'm sorry, that is Lurie versus the Planning and Zoning Commission, Town of Westport, 1 Connecticut, 295. What's interesting, since this is not a site plan permit, site plan, I mean, a special permit, in Lurie, the case, the court, the court recognized where a project requires approval of several municipal agencies, that each may be reluctant to take the first step without knowing that others will approve, and this problem can be avoided by conditional approval. In Blaker versus Planning and Zoning Commission of the Town of Fairfield, which is 212, Connecticut 471, this rule was extended to site plans like the one you have before you tonight, even though there was no proof that any other agency in that case, the Conservation Commission was likely to approve the revised site plan. So you do have the ability, consistent with case law, and those are the two cases I've given you, to make a conditional approval on the police commission, we believe.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. I guess I'll reserve comments for after the public speaks. You've, you've heard all of our presentations. If the commission would like to talk to me specifically about anything, we put a, I will address one thing. Mr. Reaver had submitted, I saw tonight, a, some comments about our 8-30G application and administration and compliance. He mentioned that we listed an entity in an LLC as the person identifying as responsible party to manage the affordability plan. The intent of this, obviously, it was to have a management company, which is identified in our, in our plan as 528 Black Rock Turnpike LLC. We will condition the approval that we designate Amorada as the person responsible party to actually manage the affordability plan. And that's basically where we are. We will, we will, we will follow all rules with regard to the dispersion of the units and no units, as you can see, the units are almost identical. We would have certainly had, probably would have two per floor and one on the third floor. As Mr. Saron stated, if the commission decided that they want to do, as a condition of approval, make one of the two-bedroom a affordable unit, we would agree to that. I think that hopefully ties up a lot of our loose ends. I did look at your recent, some recent approvals, 78 Uncle Place was consistent in density with what, what, what we're proposing, where they had 26 units on a third of an acre. The parking was 27 spaces for 26 units. There was another project, 1427-1443 Kings Highway, 14 units, 12 parking spaces approved, and 1675 Post Road, where there were 13 units and 13 parking spaces approved. One of the things that I think is even more telling in our application, even though you granted those in the past, is that we have all, except for we have one two-bedroom unit and the balance are one-bedroom units. I know the 1675 Post Road and the 78 Uncle Place both have a multitude, I think of one, two, and I think, I can remember, 78 Uncle Place might have had a three-bedroom unit. So we believe we, we more than adequately satisfy the parking requirements as stated in Mr. Galante's report and as we put forth tonight. And be happy to go through any other instances, and the commission has authority here to show that pursuant to the statutes, you need to show that the commission, the burden's on the commission so that there's substantial, is necessary to protect substantial public interests and health, safety, and other matters which the commission would consider, and that those public interests outweigh the need for affordable housing. I believe in the changes we've made, in the conditions we've proposed, that we, we have satisfied the concerns with regard to health and safety, and that the, that those public interests clearly don't, since, since we've satisfied those concerns, don't outweigh the need for affordable housing in this tribe, in this, in this town. And I'll leave it at that, and then reserve comment and final sum up after the public has spoken.
Okay, there is one other matter which was raised, for which I would appreciate your response, so that we're not in, in, in a back and forth once we move to public comment. We received a, a letter from Attorney Green requesting that the hearing either be postponed, which obviously it wasn't, or adjourned after the applicant's presentation to provide Mr. Green, Attorney Green and his client additional time to conduct traffic study and, and such. I presume you're in receipt of that? You got a copy of that?
Yeah, I would object to that. Mr. Green's known about this matter for a long time. His client has known about it for months. You're also going to now try and do a traffic analysis at a time when you, when you have, Mr., all of Mr. Galante's work was done pre-COVID. I, I, I have, I, I, I don't think this needs to be delayed any further. I, I think this is just a delay tactic, and I don't, I don't think it's necessary. I think they've known about it. Mr., I believe Mr. Ambrose is one of the principals, they've known about it, they've spoken to my client about it, they've known about this for months. I don't think there's any reasonable delay. We've had to wait, and believe it or not, I, I could see if we submitted and it was under, under a typical.
Chair, can we get rid of the screens here? That's better, thank you. Keep Attorney Rizzio. There you go.
I could, I could see, I could see if it were a typical application where, you know, there's nothing on your agendas, we've submitted to planning and zoning, it's rushed through the process, and the client gets a notice, 15 days to run out and get a traffic report. But this, this application has been pending for some time. The, Mr. Green and his client have known about it for some time. To say that the Thursday before the Tuesday, that you need to do your traffic, start your traffic analysis is just, it's just, it's just unacceptable. I mean, we will never end any kind of hearings if every, if three or four day, three business days before a hearing, somebody can say they, they want to, they want to, on an application they've been about for months. It's just, it's just unacceptable.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. With that, then, and hearing no other questions, yep, okay. Commissioner Levy, Commissioner Noonan, who else wants to get in the queue? Mr. Bremen, ah, Commissioner Braun, very good. Commissioner Levy, your first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one question on the affordability plan. The application seems, the application, the owner reserves the right to convert from this being a rental plan to selling units. The affordability plan, of course, only contemplates rental. Attorney Rizzio, would you agree that at this point, there's no, no provision for an affordability plan that would apply to sale of units? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And would you also agree that if at some point the owner did want to sell even one unit, he would have to come back to us, submit a new affordability plan, which would perhaps make provision for making such things as common charges or sale prices affordable with respect to the 30%?
We, yeah, we have no problem with that.
Okay. Nothing further, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Noonan?
Yes, maybe less for Attorney Rizzio or to any, maybe to staff. Before Mr. Galante made his presentation, I think Attorney Rizzio had rattled off a bunch of other conditions of approval, proposed conditions of approval, taking down, I lost, I lost it about halfway through.
The, if I may, Mr. Chairman, Jim went for the record, and Attorney Rizzio can correct me, but I believe he was just reading the email that we received from Laura Pooley that was a follow-up to the revised engineering report that says it's generally consistent, but lists a couple of things that she was suggesting, like green infrastructure and a couple of other things. It was an email that I believe, you may not have had a chance to, to look at, I don't believe it was distributed in your original packet, but it was forwarded to the commission today.
Okay, as long as we have a record of it, because.
And Attorney Rizzio can correct me if I misstated any of that concern.
Yeah, I, I just thought Commissioner, Commissioner Noonan, it'd be better to read the letter into the record, this way we didn't have to go on with a long engineering presentation. And there was a discussion, Commissioner Braun, whether anybody has looked at these plans subsequent to the compliance meeting. And since she had concerns, she mentioned that those were all addressed, I thought it was important, it saved us a lot of time with regard to an entire engineering presentation.
Which is fine, I just, when we make the, we go to the point of potentially approving with all these listed conditions, as long as they have to be recited with any motions for approval between the ones from Laura Pooley and the three additional ones, we can figure parking, reparking spaces in public, potentially three-bedroom as affordable housing, and as long as we can outline what they are for us to consider later, it just makes it easier, I think.
Have no problem. We, we will agree to a condition of approval that accepts all of Laura Pooley's recommendations put in her July 15th letter to the commission.
All right, we got it.
My note is with Attorney Green, I see in chat that he's having election issues as well, so the extent that that wasn't brought up, I see that now.
Thank you, Commissioner Noonan. He noted that in the, in the chat box. We'll try and deal with that. Okay, Commissioner Braun. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner, anything, anything else? Okay, thanks. Commissioner Braun, you're on mute.
I have a couple of random questions for anybody who can answer them. Is there any green construction going on per Laura Pooley's recommendation?
Attorney Rizzio just acknowledged that they agreed to a condition of approval that they would do so.
What does that entail, or what does that mean?
That's, that's, that's your question.
Is just, so we're green, I mean, is there any more detail than that, or?
She just would like us to implement some green elements to the, to the, to the construction, and we would agree to do so. We'd have to, I, I don't, I don't necessarily need that as a condition, I think it's more of a desire.
Hey, it's all right.
But so much specifics.
I think Laura is, I think Laura is, I'm off anyway. I think Laura's statement had to do with more site stuff, but we, of course, would use as much sustainable materials as we could in the building. I, I'm not sure if she was talking about building materials versus landscaping and drainage and things like that, which I think what she was addressing.
It's hard to know, is there any way of getting some more detail from her about what she meant by that and what you can do to provide green construction? Was it in her email or in her code review? Somewhere it was written down. Must have been in her email.
It's in the email, and she speaks to green infrastructure.
Okay, so nobody knows exactly what that means?
No.
Or how it could affect the design? Okay. Can someone clarify the, the spaces before and after the removal of public spaces? This project, I thought, had 26 spaces, and I've heard it mentioned there were 27, but will be given to the public to make up for the six that are being removed from Castle Avenue. Can someone delineate the before and after amongst the public and the, under the building spaces?
We had, what happened is there's 26. If we change, if we agree to a condition that there be a entrance only on the northern, on the driveway, on the nor, on the easterly side of Castle Avenue, so that becomes a circulatory, circular circulation, I guess, that you would, that you would enter where the, on this, on the eastern side of Castle Avenue, there is a space that is crosshatch proposed turnaround area, that is the exact size of a parking space. We would ask that that be modified to become parking space 27. That would allow us to allow three spaces to be available to the public, and then, then we would end up with one space per unit.
A little more.
So, right now, that crosshatch area in the very low left of the, the blue site plan, the most recent site plan, that's not a parking space now? What is that now?
Right now, if, 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 if the site plan were adopted the way it is looked at right now, there is no full circular way to traverse the property. If we, as suggested by.
So, so the crosshatch indicates a turnaround spot.
Okay.
Right. And that turnaround spot, which is the size of a legal parking spot, would be converted to our 27th space.
So, and that requires them that you, what else is changing about the traffic flow then in order to use that as a parking spot?
They gotta take a wall down and make it a driveway.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
They have to take a wall down and make another driveway.
Oh, a sec, okay, so the whole plan would change, instead of having in and out right there, you would have in farther up Castle Avenue and just out closer to the corner of Black Rock?
Correct.
Correct.
That is what Mr. Galante is proposing as a safer design for the building and the traffic flow.
And that was considered but rejected earlier, for what reason? He said there was a reason why they considered that earlier on, but then decided not to have two different, one ingress up Castle Avenue and then egress down Castle Avenue towards Black Rock Turnpike? What was the reason that was rejected for, I guess, Mr. Galante?
Michael, we looked at various alternatives for access to the site. The plan that was shown tonight was what we have proposed prior, prior to tonight. Based on all the comments and discussions tonight, and this is the purpose of a public hearing, we decided to make that change. And obviously, we're not in the same room as my client, but we felt this was a better plan, and the chairman certainly agreed, and that's why we're going with that.
So you're right now deciding you're going to change the plan, but we're looking to have a separate ingress versus egress, two different driveways?
I'll let Mr. Rizzio respond to that, exactly how, how we're doing that and what we're doing.
That would be a recommend, it's a recommendation from the traffic engineer, and if the commission decided to adopt that as a condition of approval, we would accept that.
Okay, but, okay, so my original question was, I thought I heard Mr. Galante earlier say that was considered. say that was considered, but there was a reason why we chose not to do that originally.
Yeah, I said that I wasn't sure if the grades would be able to accommodate driveway. Mr. Serone, the grade of the driveway coming up from Castle Avenue into the deck or the floor of the garage. Mr. Serone, during his hearing, said that it would work, and that's why we decided to go in that direction.
Okay.
When you say go in that direction, we would agree to that as a condition of approval because it is achievable.
Okay. So, and then the other, the site plan that we were talking about at the beginning of Mr. Galante's presentation, that was not the blue version. That was a black and white version. And the only one I could find in my material, we couldn't really see the date from the, you know, from the WebEx. That was the December 2019 version. But is there a difference between that and the blue version? The blue one is the most recent site plan, right? So the one we were looking at that was on the screen, the only one I could find from my material is one from December of 19. I'm just trying to make sure I'm clear on what I was looking at and what we're basing your presentation on. You were, you asked us to look at the site plan at the beginning of your presentation?
The site plan that you should be looking at is a site plan that lists the date of December 2019. Above the title block, there are three revision dates, 1/1/6/2020, 1/1/24/2020, and last one is at 7/15/2020.
So the black and white one, is those, oh, okay, now I see the three dates on it. So that should match the blue one that we're also talking about, which we just got separately. The one with the blue ink?
I'm looking at black and white, so I would assume, if you have those revision dates on the top of that title block, that we're all looking at the same thing.
Okay. And then, just to be clear again, the traffic flow from into Black Rock Turnpike will not change when you're, from Castle Avenue onto Black Rock Turnpike, currently, you can make a left turn or a right turn. And that will remain, but coming from Black Rock Turnpike, you will not be able to enter making a right turn from Kings Highway onto Castle Ave. Can you just explain what's changing in and out at that intersection?
Kings Highway?
Now?
We didn't even study the intersection of Kings Highway.
Coming from the direction of Kings Highway.
It would be a right turn in and a left turn into the driveway on the easterly side of the property front.
So there's no change in coming in or out of Castle and Black Rock Turnpike? I thought, I could have somebody say it would be one, no, you could not make a right onto Castle from Black Rock Turnpike anymore?
No, 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 no. That was, there was a discussion about that. What, the only thing that will change is there'll be, if the condition decides, if the commission decides to adopt, where you see on the eastern side of the property, there is currently that crosshatched space, a driveway will be added, and it will no longer be in and out lines. It'll be, you'll enter in, there will be a arrow that takes you around, you'll enter in on the eastern side of Castle Avenue, you will exit on the western side of Castle Avenue. You will then only be able to make a right turn pursuant to Mr., correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Galante's recommendations. And once you get to the stop sign, which has moved closer to Black Rock Turnpike, you will be able to make a right or a left. Is that correct, Mike?
That's correct.
So nothing is changing from going into Castle Avenue or exiting Castle Avenue from or to Black Rock Turnpike? That is staying the way it is now, except for moving the stop sign closer to Black Rock Turnpike from Castle Avenue?
Correct.
Thank you.
But the maneuver, all the same maneuvers will be available to the public at the corner of Castle Avenue and Black Rock Turnpike.
Okay, thank you.
Then I think next up was, my squares shifted. Was it Commissioner Noonan or Bremen? Does that, who has further questions?
Oh, I did, Mr. Chair. I just, actually, I just had a comment. I agree with Commissioner Noonan's statement that we should have a comprehensive list of all the conditions of approval that we're being asked to adopt or that the applicant has agreed to in this hearing.
Very good. And I think Attorney Rizzio can work with Mr. Went and prepare that. I'm sure Mr. Went, as he usually does, takes note of those concessions during the hearing. Anyone else? All right, very good. Commissioner Braun?
Can I get those two citations? I couldn't find them in Fuller.
Oh, no. I closed the book. Hold on a second. All right. Lurie versus Planning and Zoning Commission, town of Westport.
Hold on. L.A.U. on the I.D.
L.R.I.E., Planning and Zoning Commission, 160 Connecticut, 295. Then the second one, which extends it to site plans, is Blaker, B.L.A.K.E.R., the Planning and Zoning Commission of Town of Fairfield, 212 Connecticut, 471.
212?
212, 212 Connecticut, 471.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Very good. With that, I will close the applicant's presentation, and I will open the hearing now up for members of the public.
This is Jim Went. I do have in a chat Attorney Linda Lasky from Joel Green's office wishing to be heard, presumably on the matter that you discussed with Mr. Rizzio before. There were certain commissioner questions.
Yeah, on...
On whether, how to proceed further from here.
Sure, sure. Well, she's now appearing in Mr. Green's stead, and I think he was the first up on the list.
Correct.
And I'm sorry, I didn't catch that name. Lasky, right?
Linda Lasky.
Hi, yes. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm Linda Lasky. I'm an attorney at the law offices of Green and Gross, and I am kind of a last-minute sub-in here for Attorney Joel Green, who has been representing the property owner across the street, L.A.R. Associates, who own the property at 1100 Kings Highway. So we have been requesting that the commission would keep this hearing open for at least one meeting. In addition to the traffic study issue that was discussed earlier, we have also been alerted just yesterday, and then again this morning, of at least one and possibly more than one potential professional conflicts that may affect our representation here. So we're, right now, we're consulting with counsel, and we're investigating the matter. But for the moment, we are going to need to decline to proceed with any representation of L.A.R. Associates. However, just, you know, in addition to the reasons that were given in the letter that Attorney Green provided to the commission, I would just add that there seem to be some additional changes that have been made to the plans. Now, I'm not, I have not been personally familiar with this plan. Attorney Green has been handling this matter for our firm, but it sounds like there have been some additional changes to parking and entryways, access drives, that our traffic consultant would possibly need to take into account. And I would also just note that it's my understanding that we only received a copy of the applicant's traffic study on July 22nd. So the suggestion that there has been some untoward delay or neglect on our part is just simply not accurate. So I would, just on behalf of L.A.R., at this point, we would request, and in the interest of fairness, that we would request that the hearing be kept open for at least one meeting until we can resolve the potential conflict issues and get the traffic report completed.
Okay, so let me take that last part first. The traffic impact study summary that I have is not dated. What is the date on the traffic study that is a part of the record here, Mr. Went?
We received it on the 21st, posted it on the 21st of July. I don't know the date. I don't have it in front of me, but it was posted to our website and distributed, and actually emailed, I believe, to Attorney Ambrose, who was requesting information on that same date, July 21st, I believe.
All right, so they didn't get the traffic study until July 21st of 2020?
We didn't get it until that date. That's that same date.
Yep. All right, so it was filed, and it was available to the public and sent specifically to L.A.R. through Mr. Ambrose, Attorney Ambrose, on July 21st.
Correct.
Okay. Attorney Lasky, you're referring to some conflicts, meaning ethical conflicts that might result in your firm either, you know, being disqualified or recusing from the representation here?
Exactly. That's my understanding of the nature of the conflicts we're concerned about.
Okay. And those just came up in the last day or two?
One apparently just came up today, and another just, I believe, yesterday.
Okay. Mr. Went, what is the timing on this application in terms of our obligations to conclude the public hearing and then also to make a decision?
Well, we've, now that we've begun the hearing, in the absence of any extension from the applicant, we have 35 days from today to complete the hearing. Once the hearing is completed, you have another 65 days to complete the application.
Okay. When is our next regularly scheduled meeting?
Our next regularly scheduled meeting after today is the 25th of this month, I'm just trying to pull up my calendar here, is two weeks from tonight. We had had a, you and I had had an offline discussion about potentially not rescheduling or skipping that meeting due to certain issues with personal schedules, but so...
In the summer.
On the calendar is the 25th, beyond that is September 15th.
September 15th?
If it's not going to be the 25th, September 15th is a date that's already calendared for the continuation of the Beach Road hearing. So if not the 25th, if we were indeed going to reschedule or not have the meeting on the 25th, it would have to be either September 1st or September 8th, which would be an additional meeting or a meeting in lieu of the meeting of the 25th of August.
Right. All right, well, you know, I mean, I have to say, Attorney Lasky, this is, it seems like a very regular occurrence that Attorney Green is filing a request for an adjournment 48 hours before a hearing, claiming that he's only been just engaged when there has been things happening for some time to Attorney Rizzio's point. You know, it puts us all in a really awkward position. Puts the members of the public in an awkward position, having done their part to review the record and provide their comments, you know. And this presents, I think, a bit of an interesting twist in that, you know, the applicant here, in their remarks and in their presentation, have agreed to some, I think, extensive changes to the site plan, including another curb cut and directional issues with, you know, the traffic flow, parking spaces and the like, which, you know, I quite frankly, I think I might like to see. I think I might like to have our police and fire evaluate revisions to, you know, those changes in considering whether I personally would like to, you know, suggest those as conditions of approval and to discuss those with my fellow commissioners. I don't know how the schedule is going to work out. Do other members of the commission have questions or comments here with respect to this? Commissioner Noonan?
Yeah. Considering the changes that have been made, and I understand your point is well-taken that Attorney Green does make these requests for continuances, you know, as you said, 48 hours beforehand, and I don't know what his involvement is. I don't remember the model of the past. But considering the changes that have been made, and just in general, perjuries granted to counsel, I think we've been pretty good with, I would be okay with the 25th, though I don't know what we, what offline conferences we've had, or you've had as to potentially going forward to the 25th. Assuming that's going forward, I am comfortable with a two-week adjournment, at least to give Attorney Green. I would say still go forward with whomever in the public wishes to be heard today.
Oh, without a doubt. No, without a, I mean, you know, Attorney Lasky is, was the first to the podium and now just in front of us. And I agree, I think that at a minimum, we continue to proceed and get as much done as we can. And, I mean...
This is not a position where I would hold too fast. I think the two, a two-week adjournment for Attorney Green, even just considering ethical considerations that have just recently popped up, and I take Attorney Lasky at her word, that in itself, I think, might be sufficient for that reason for, it was an L.A.R. Associates or client, to make sure it has proper counsel. But more for the fact, just the substantial change, yeah, substantial changes been made, I think we all need to consider.
Yeah. No, I, all points very well taken. Other, anyone else? Yes, Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, I would also agree with the continuance, lest that become our failure to grant it. Could become an issue for appeal, and the simple solution is to allow a reasonable continuance.
Any other commissioners? All right. So, I mean, I think, I think we treat this, you know, as a request, a professional request. We're within the window of statutory time that we can accommodate that request, and I think we proceed as much as we can with any other members of the public this evening that wish to be heard, and then we keep the matter open for our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be on August 25th. Does anyone, any member of the commission, okay, before I ask for that, Mr. Went, yes?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to ask, Mr. Rizzio, it might be helpful, if the commission deems it important to see what that revised site plan might look like before the continuance, would there be enough time for that to be prepared? So I would kick that back to the applicant's team as to whether the revisions that we've discussed, could that be put on paper in time to turn that around in that timeframe?
Chairman, I mean, Commissioner, Chairman and Mr. Went, we would agree to have that done for your next meeting. We would also submit it to you so that hopefully you can distribute it to the commissioners prior to the meeting. And I would expect, since Ms. Lasky, Ms. Lasky is here today, she knows what the changes will be, so that the fact that they're going to be looking at that maybe a week before a hearing won't be an excuse to delay the hearing again.
In fairness, Attorney Rizzio, what I'm hearing from Attorney Lasky is that, in all likelihood, it will not be her firm that's representing L.A.R. Associates, that due to an ethical conflict, her firm will no longer be able to act on their behalf. And we may hear from another attorney that, you know, new counsel... And we may hear from another attorney that, you know, new, new counsel, that there may be some other inquiry that needs to be had. So I'm not, I just, I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves. Mr. Went, I appreciate you raising that. Yeah, I appreciate you raising that. I was going to ask the applicant to turn that around so that we could have that reviewed by town agencies, the same way that we would in, in, in the ordinary course and that I, you know, failing the applicant then asking for more time to get that done. I don't see why we couldn't do that before the next meeting on the 25th.
That's fine. We, we, we respect your request and we'll make sure that it gets accommodated.
I just had one follow-up, Mr. Chairman, and, and I can discuss this offline with Mr. Rizzio, but I just wanted to make sure he doesn't disagree with my calendar with respect to this. We have used the lion's share of the executive order extension to get, get us to this hearing. And I know this is not, it's, it's an HHS 3G, it's a site plan application, not necessarily a special permit. So I don't want there to be any conflicts of, on, on timing if I've misstated our calendar time, but I think we're okay, I just wanted to make sure you're in agreement.
I'll make it clear for the record, if Mr., we should run into issues with regard to time. I mean, we'd like to get on the next possible agenda that we will, we will, we will, we will get the information you need and we will waive, waive the statutory contingency. I, I don't want to put the commission in the decision, in a position where they can't make a fully informed decision.
Yeah, appreciate.
I, I expected that to be the case, I just appreciated that for the record.
Yep, and thank, thank you both for your attention to detail there. All right, so then before I move forward, is there any member of the commission that has any objection to what we're, what we're doing here procedurally? All right, very good. Thank you, Ms. Lasky. And with that, Ms. Harrigan, do we have another member of the public that's signed into the?
Yes, I believe Attorney Ambrose would also like to speak, as well as Mr. Reber.
Okay.
Galen Sem-
One at a time, that's great, terrific. So Attorney Ambrose, you're next up.
Oh, yes. Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, I just want to clarify something for your edification. I have reached Joel Green and for months now, at least four months, to assist me in, in dealing with the project that's immediately across the street from me. He knows my concerns, in fact, he has made his representation known to Mr. Camerata four months ago. And Mr. Attorney Rizzio was well aware of that fact. It was only until three days ago when Joel contacted me and said, Peter, I cannot, I may not be able to represent you because Attorney Rizzio has raised an issue of a possible conflict of interest. And the conflict of interest, Joel said to me, Joel had researched, as we have to do, to, to make sure we don't have conflicts of interest. And he had researched with his staff and found no conflicts of interest were involved. But then apparently, other than Mr. Camerata, there was one other individual whose name was given to Joel, who Joel was completely unaware of, who said that his firm had represented him and he was part of the application, part of the process, part of the financial backing. So I, I'm left now without counsel. Joel is concerned about ethical complaints that may be brought against him as a result of his representing me. I have engaged a traffic expert. I, I've, I have, I've already discussed a good portion of, of the report with him that he has prepared. Because of the last five days, last week, four or five days with COVID, it was really impossible to get anything done because we were without electricity. So we were pressed with a lot of issues and have been. As soon as I got the traffic study from, from Mr. Went, who was kind enough to send it to me, I sent it to Joel Green. So it's, this is not something that, that I've been laxadaisical on, I certainly have not been. And I do deserve that, I'm, right now, I'm without counsel and I'm going to need to find someone to, to assist me in, 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 in dealing with this. And I, I just want you to know that, that, that it comes as no surprise to Mr. Camerata that, that, that Joel was going to represent me. There was a conversation that was had in the law office in, in Bridgeport four months ago to, when, when Joel Green had told Camerata that he would be representing me. So just, I just want to set the record straight.
I appreciate that. I think one of the points that, that, that you're making is that Attorney Rizzio could have brought to your attention and your attorney's attention the possible conflict four months ago and didn't, and you only learned of that recently.
Absolutely. Essentially, that's correct, absolutely correct.
Very, very good. And, and so I, I think we understand all the detail that, that you're providing, appreciate that. I see you, Attorney Rizzio, just hold on a second. We need to take things one step at a time. At the, at the moment, you know, we have the time, the statutory time to adjourn the meeting, we have the opportunity to accommodate, you know, the professional request of, of your attorneys to, you know, adjourn, adjourn the meeting and, and give you a chance to substitute representation. And if there are arguments and other, you know, issues that you need to bring to bear in, in the meantime, then by all means, you know, you, you should bring them to bear. And if there are your, your successor counsel, you know, that, that they need to make in that regard, then, then by all means, then, you know, you or she should make them.
I thank you for that consideration.
All right, yeah, so, I mean, it's, it's a little bit of unusual situation, but Attorney Rizzio, if you, you want to just respond to that, it's fine.
Yeah.
Sorry, you're on-
Yeah, not entirely accurate, maybe because Peter wasn't informed on all these things. But my client had let Mr., at least he told me, he had let Mr. Ambrose know and Mr. Green know that, that he thought there was a conflict. They made a decision that they, that they didn't think there was a conflict. There was another individual that arose that said, wait, there's definitely a conflict here. I had discussions with Mr. Green this week, I had discussions with him as early as this afternoon, right? Told him that our clients would object to him representing Mr. Ambrose, and I also told him I would seek a waiver from our clients. So I don't want anybody to get the feeling here that he, this was a sandbag, this has been an issue all along. I first had formal contact that Mr. Green was actually going to go forward representing them last Thursday. I was away, I was traveling from Arizona after helping my daughter recover from surgery. I got to this thing on Monday, immediately addressed it with Mr. Green. I thought we had worked it out, I had told him that my clients were okay with him going forward and that I would seek a waiver from my clients. Mr. Mr. Ambrose, Mr. Green have all known Mr. Camerata's concern over conflict for a long time. That being said, I just wanted to clear the record so that the commission didn't think this was, there was any intentional sandbagging here of anybody. And I've certainly been upfront with Mr. Green, who will tell you that from day one. I will also tell you that, all that aside, commission is entitled to look at further information and we will adjust our plans, we will get them to you prior to your next meeting in hope that we'll move the expedientity with no more delays with regard to conflicts of interest because our client at this point was willing to sign a waiver or with regard to them needing additional time to retain expertise.
All, all of the clients are willing to sign a waiver? I mean, because that's what I'm hearing.
Yes, yes, yep. Yes.
All right, well, you know what, the, the facts are, and then, Mr. Ambrose, I'll let you respond in a moment. But at the end of the day, I think it is of no moment because we are going to adjourn until the 25th and Mr. Ambrose can figure out whether the, the waiver is satisfactory and he wants to continue with Green Gross or he wants to find another lawyer. Mr. Ambrose may not be comfortable with there being a possible conflict. But this is not of our concern, this is not of our concern. It gives you, at the same time, it gives the applicant time to prepare these alternative plans, which can be considered by town staff and also members of the public, as well as us at the next meeting. So I think that constructively, we found a path forward that meets the, the circumstances. All right, Mr. Ambrose, do you have anything briefly to, to, to add to that?
No, I, I, I do believe that I did hear Ray indicate that he would waive any conflict that Joel Green would have, and if that is the case, I'll continue with Joel Green, if he'll continue with me.
All right, good. Yeah, I leave that to you folks to work out, you know, for, for yourselves in an attorney-client relationship. And frankly, I'm sensitive to us, like even going further with this on the public record. I don't think it's necessary and you all should just work that out privately and, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll see how those chips, you know, we'll see how, how that works out for you. Very well then. I think then with that, Mr. Ambrose, your comments are, are concluded and we'll move on to the next person. I think it was Galen Semperban? Or is that, no, that's, is that part of? I'm sorry, Ms. Harrigan, I'll, I'll let you run, run the line here. Is there, Mr. Reber, is? Who's next up?
Well, I believe that Mr. Semperban is, is unmuted. If he wants to go first, that would be fine.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can now.
Oh, okay, thank you. I, I typed in because I wasn't sure if the meeting was going to be continued with all the changes. I'm working for, for Peter Ambrose and I'd like to take the time then to just review the plans further. These changes would, would influence a number of the comments I had. So much of what I would have said may have been addressed already, so, thank you.
You, you're welcome. That, that, that's fair, yes, certainly, and particularly since you are associated with and work, working for Mr. Ambrose, Attorney Ambrose. You'll review the, the new plans and, and you can reserve comments until the next hearing. Mr. Reber?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
I'm going to be very brief with no conflicts. My first point was already covered by Attorney Rizzio. He's agreed to identify a responsible party for the compliance plan, which I think is important. My second point, Mr. Chairman, you covered, and that is, I think it's always important to have a, a site plan that shows which units are going to be affordable and which are not. You covered that, I think, quite effectively. Thirdly, I, I really came here tonight to support this application for this reason. If you look at this neighborhood, for rental units, they're primarily trademark and Metro Center, which are 10% affordable at 80%. The rest of the units are rather luxury priced. This building at 830G offers some 60% units. It's got no amenities, so I think the rents are going to be lower. So I think this is much more of a workforce building in a neighborhood where most of the rental units are at a luxury price. I think that's an important consideration. However, I, I'm now concerned about the, the parking issue and whether there's a safety issue associated with it. I, I strongly disagree with Mr. Galante's statement that the Police Commission is going to rubber stamp a, an application to put up no parking signs. I've had the personal experience on the street in which I live, which a neighbor tried to get no parking put up in front of their house near the Post Road because they didn't like people from the Post Road parking in front of their house. The neighborhood put forward a petition opposing that and the Police Commission turned down that no parking application. And one of the commissioners told me afterwards, they give great weight to neighbors when they oppose no parking applications. I, I think you're going to find neighbors here who are going to oppose the no parking application. So I think that Mr. Galante's statement that this is a rubber stamp is, is completely untrue. It's my time to speak now. You, you made the statement, Mr. Galante, that they routinely approve no parking, and I'm saying that in residential neighborhoods, they don't routinely approve them where there's neighborhood opposition, which I think they'll be here. What is the safety application, the safety implications of a not approval? I'm not sure, but I think you need to look at that very carefully. And I think that in a 830G application where the, the primary issue is safety and health, you really should be able to make a condition of approval that a Police Commission approval is sought because it's a central safety issue, appears to be anyway. So I, I hope you will not go into this thinking that this is going to be a slam dunk on no parking. I don't believe it will be. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Reber, always appreciate your comments.
Can I ask, I know it's unusual, can I ask Mr. Reber quickly what his thoughts are on the one bedroom, considering his very close expertise to affordable housing
Sure.
issues?
You know, you may, you may raise a really good point that I wish I'd made. And that is, again, if you look at trademark and Metro Center, you've got a lot of two and three bedroom units. Here you've got mostly one bedroom units in a building without amenities. And I think you're going to find that this is much more of a workforce type building, which we need in Fairfield. I, I think it really is, the fact that they're making it one bedroom is very positive. I don't like-
Mr. Reber, there's only one two-bedroom. And normally for affordable housing units, you have to make sure that they're equally provided with the non-affordable, and there's only one two-bedroom. What are your thoughts on it being, having to be affordable, an affordable unit or not?
I'm smiling when I respond because I got shot down on this when this came up on the Post Road building, where there was a penthouse on the top floor that I felt was really unfair to not have that be an affordable unit. But your commission sought to allow that not to be affordable. So I think based on your own precedent that you would probably allow this not to be affordable.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Reber. Ms. Harrigan, is there another member of the public in the line here to be heard?
I don't believe so, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Well, then, I, I think then that will conclude our meeting. I will hold the public hearing on this matter open until our next regularly scheduled meeting on August 25th. And I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone, for attending.
Take care.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Bye now.